I'm not doing your.
You're gonna need it eventually.
And then I would, of course, I looked at it because I can't help myself. And I'm like, oh, you.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, November 28th. It is a little past 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed non-union compensation. The first item on our agenda is Resolution One, considering a request of an extension exemption of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Avon Circle.
Whereas on April 11th, 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st to September 30th, effective May 1st of next year. And whereas under the Village Code, properties with at least five acres of property can apply to the Village Board for a full or partial exemption or exemption of the local law. And whereas an application has been distributed to known eligible properties of the Village of Rybrook and also placed on the Rybrook website. And whereas on September 29th, 2023, representatives of Avon Circle submitted an application for an exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as considerations raised in the application from representatives of Avon Circle, the Village Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for the exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Avon Circle.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have representatives from Avon Circle with us? Can you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Rosabella. I am the property manager for Avon Circle. I've managed the property since 2009. We're 14.2 acres. It's a large piece of property. We have many, 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 many beautiful trees that shed a lot, a lot of leaves. And to ban the gas blower would be very devastating to us. We have two men. We have two gas blowers, which we use. What we've done to try to cut down on the usage, we've made, I have them do multiple piles now. We'll do piles as many as 10, 12, 14 piles. And with the help of Mike from Rybrook, we're allowed to dump on Lincoln Avenue. So that's a little help and that helps the cost there. We have a landscaper that comes in and he sucks it up with a vacuum cleaner or whatever and he dumps it there. We only have two men and the leaves start falling there mid-October and they fall until the first week in December. I think we did our last cleanup maybe today and maybe at the end of the week, we'll have one more and that's it. You know, we try to limit the use of the blowers as much as possible. I'm happy to work with Rybrook, as I've done in the past on other matters. But to ban the gas blowers is really tough. The battery pack, and this is one of the biggest things. It's not even the cost. It's just the function of the battery. The battery pack blower, a good one, and this is through Argento in White Plains where most guys buy their equipment. A good battery pack blower is $899. It comes with two batteries. The batteries combined last approximately 50 minutes, which means they would have to, if they have 50 minutes of work, then they'd have to go back and charge it. Additional batteries are $329 each. So it does become an expense, but the problem with the other blowers, the battery blowers, is the 690 cubic feet per minute opposed to the gas, which is up to 1,000. So there's a big difference on the amount it does. The other blowers would take probably twice as long to do it. So, you know, we're looking to extend your policy. We'd like to have it omitted completely from us, but, you know, if we could get a year extension or a two-year extension, we'll work with you. I mean, you know, we could try a gas blower. But I know from experience from other landscapers that are trying them that they're, they just don't do the job.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just because you were talking about the leaves.
Right.
This, the policy actually allows gas-powered leaf blowers during the leaf season. Are you only using the gas-powered blowers during the leaf season or are you using?
I read this run. Oh, my apologies. I thought they wanted to stop the leaf blowing during the leaf season, the gas.
No.
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 The opposite.
We only use them during the leaf season.
You only use?
So the current, from, it's only a. It's May 1st to September 30th is the ban.
After September 30th.
After September 30th, gas is fine.
Prior to that, we may use it to clean the parking lots. I mean, you know, we got big roads there and unfortunately they're private. I don't know why they did it that way. I would much rather if it was a Rybrook road because we would. But we gotta pay for a plow. But that's how they did it with their.
The next meeting.
Yeah. No, I mean, prior to that date, I mean, we use them very limited. I mean, I thought it was the ban with the gas, the way I understood it.
The ban is only during, in the non-prime season. It's from May 1st to September 30th.
Yeah.
That doesn't even apply to us then, I mean.
Well.
But I would still like to use a gas blower if we had to, but it's very limited if we use it. It's only for maybe blowing some dirt off the sidewalks or something like that. It's very, very limited.
And I think what the hope is that for the, that time period, for that limited use, there would be electric blowers used during that time.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's.
Maybe that's an opportunity. I know they're expensive and maybe just to buy one or invest in one with just one battery.
I have no problem with that.
Just try during the summer.
We can use the gas blowers.
October 1st.
Yep.
Straight through.
October 1st.
And then spring.
Straight through to April.
And then spring through the end of April.
Yeah.
Straight through to the end of April.
Yeah, like a lot of people that are coming before us are saying that they're working on investing in electric gas blowers and they would, that's why they would like an extension to give them a little more time.
Well, we would have to get a battery. Electric, we'd need a cord from here to.
Battery, yeah, battery.
The cord would be too heavy for them to carry, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if you think that you'd be able to handle the off-season load with an electric, then you wouldn't need the exemption.
Right, right.
Because then, then we would, you know, then as soon as it hits October 1st and the leaves start falling.
Right, right.
You can use the gas-powered blowers.
All right, well, I mean.
Sir, how many houses are in Avon Circle?
There's 170 units.
Because any.
Forty-three buildings.
Okay, because any cost you have would be divided amongst 170 people then. So even if a battery costs $350, we're talking $2 a head.
Well, I don't want to go into that, that point, but we just had a $2 million assessment for a flood, which everyone knows about.
Yes.
That comes from the Brook. And we hit the people for the average assessment was around $11,000. We have a lot of seniors there. So I'm there. Since 2009, we've only had two common charge increases. I'm very frugal with their money and, you know, to raise it. Now, we're getting a 3% raise January 1 because of flood insurance. Our flood insurance went from $50,000 to $150,000. So it's, it's tough and, you know, a nickel here or 300 here, it's not a big deal, but it adds up. And to me, it's more the time-consuming. We have two very good workers there. But if it takes them an extra two hours a day, times five, that's 10 hours, I'm losing with them.
Right.
With the leaf blowers.
Right.
But if we have to just use it starting October 1, I think I could get by with that.
All right, then, then, and well, two points that I would bring up. One, I would say regarding the flooding, we're certainly trying to do our part to limit the flooding downstream with, and, you know, upstream of you with lots of different projects. What I would maybe suggest then is maybe that we don't, maybe that we don't vote on this?
No, you can withdraw.
Yeah.
It sounds like the application's being withdrawn and I don't think a motion in a second was made on the resolution.
It was not. So there's really no action that we have, I don't think there's any action we have to take.
So we really can't use the, to make it simple, we can't use it before September 30th. We can use the gas after September 30th.
That's correct. Yeah, so.
Even in the spring up until May 1.
The spring cleaning also, it's really just until May 1st. So May 1st through September 30th, no, but the rest of the year, yes.
Give them a battery once a play with after that.
There we go. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you all much.
Wonderful.
You too.
Yeah. All right, so moving on to Resolution Number Two. Very similar, considering a request for an extension exemption of Chapter 158, Section 2.1 of the Village Code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for Talcot Woods.
Whereas on April 11th, 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a local law enacting the seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st to September 30th, starting May 1st of next year. And whereas under the Village Code, properties with at least five acres of property are eligible to apply for a full or partial exemption or extension. And whereas the application has been distributed to the Village of Rybrook and the eligible properties, as well as placed on our website. And whereas on November 1st, 2023, representatives of Talcot Woods submitted an application for an exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. Now therefore be it resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as consideration raised in the application from representatives of Talcot Woods, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby either denies, approves, or approves with conditions the request for an exemption of the Village Code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for Talcot Woods.
Thank you, Chris, and we have a representative from Talcot Woods.
Good evening. My name is Richard Mast. I live at 6 Talcot Road. I'm the president of our homeowners association. And I think you know Vito Longo, a landscaper of almost 20 years. You have a package that we sent to Greg. Hopefully you've had the opportunity to read the letter, our scout program, and view the photos that we sent as well, the detail of what our property looks like. If you don't mind, I'd like to just read through the letter. I'll be quick, but just so everybody can hear it once out loud. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Trustees, Talcot Woods, located in between Lincoln Avenue and Bonwit Road, is one of the first HOAs to be established in Westchester County in 1978. Our development consists of more than 25 acres and includes a combination of 68 privately-owned homeowner lots, as well as substantial acreage of common property that runs all throughout our development from the bottom to the top of Talcot Road, as well as along two extensive man-made stream beds on either side of our development. Collectively, our 68 homeowners pay real estate taxes of over $1,500,000. The Talcot Woods Owners Association is managed by a seven-member volunteer board of directors, all current homeowners, who are completely responsible for the management of the entire property, including both private and common areas. The board manages a budget of almost $500,000 annually, largely utilized to maintain our development, which includes the 68 aforementioned private homeowner lots, including front, back, and side yards, the common properties, a substantial pond, a swimming pool and a poolhouse, a 15-foot fence, 1,500-foot fence along Crawford Park, eight cul-de-sac islands and roadways, and our two stream beds. Our community of homeowners takes great pride in the appearance of our entire development and takes great pains and expense to maintain our properties for our benefit, of course, but also to present ourselves to prospective new movers into Rybrook, as well as to the hundreds of citizens that drive through our development every single day, sometimes way too fast. The Board employs Vito Longo Landscaping, Central Tree Service, American Pool Management, The Pond Connection, New England Aquatics, American Minuteman, as well as several other vendors to provide ongoing services to our community in order to keep our property pristine and to serve as a model Village of Rybrook place to live. These vendors, all locally sourced, ensure the natural health of our lawns, our landscaping, our hundreds of trees, and our waterways. We keep our pond ecologically sound by dredging any minnows every spring and running two fountains from April through October. Mosquito dunks are installed seasonally in all wet areas on our property to reduce the bug population and to protect our waterways from insect larvae. We utilize a scout program, and that's attached to your package, through Central Tree Service to ensure our hundreds of trees are inspected on a regular basis by professional arborists for potential disease, are treated with organic chemicals four times a year, and are kept alive and healthy. Through the scout program, diseased or dying trees are removed and replaced with new, younger ones on an ongoing basis all year long. We pave our cul-de-sac roadways and replant our flowers and cul-de-sac shrubs as needed. We also maintain and clear the 30 storm drains on our common property every year and have them inspected by an outside expert, as well as servicing 1,500 feet of underground piping. All of this is done with the intent of maintaining an eco-healthy community of which our entire village can be proud. We have an architectural committee, a maintenance committee, and a compliance committee, all used to ensure that Talcot Woods is well-maintained and looks pleasing and immaculate to all of our visitors, prospective new movers, as I said, and passersby all year long. We formally inspect every aspect of our community and the exterior of our homes four times a year for proper upkeep and maintenance compliance. In terms of lawn and leaf maintenance, Vito Longo Landscaping performs mowing, blowing, pruning, mulching, feeding, seeding, and the removal of clippings, leaves, branches, and various other natural debris every Monday from April through December. Such removal requires six to 10 men and is performed every Monday from 8:30 to 4:30. Vito uses mulching blades to mow each week in order to minimize the amount of blowing and the amount of dumping. All of the above is critical to not only keep our entire development clean, but also to keep both our waterways, which run along the left and right sides of our property from top to bottom, free and clear of all debris so the water can flow downward and not bleed onto private homeowner property. This is a painstaking and time-consuming task that Vito's men perform for us. Excuse me. The new law requiring conversion from gas blowers to electric ones will pose a great problem for us and for our landscaping vendor. Electric blowers require many batteries, which generally carry a working life of about one to two hours and need to be recharged for almost four hours after each use. As such, the batteries will constantly have to be installed, then removed, and then recharged literally all day long during the weekly cleanup process. Where would all these batteries be kept during the course of the day? Where would they be stored when not in use? Who would maintain them? How often would they have to be replaced? Clearly, you can see the issues with the battery management process in addition to the expense to both the contractor and our 68 homeowners in terms of numbers of new blowers, batteries, and chargers that would be needed to cover our 25 acres. We also believe that using such less effective equipment will require more men, more time to perform the various cleanup tasks, and may well create even more noise and more air particulates. Vito and the board have always tried to keep leaf blower activity to a minimum by limiting it to a one-day-only activity and by using Mondays as our cleanup day, with the assumption that the majority of our homeowners are out at their workplaces rather than interrupting their weekend activities. We also feel very strongly, after many hours of listening to and observing Vito's men in action, that the leaf blower noise does not intrude in any way beyond our property into other neighboring streets. We certainly respect what the Village Board is trying to accomplish in terms of being eco-friendly. We think the various green-friendly programs we have outlined demonstrate that we support you in this goal. We also very much appreciate the opportunity to present to you our appeal for a period of exclusion from the new law. In a spirit of cooperation and concession, we are proposing to make some adjustments to our current Monday maintenance program in the hopes that the Village Board will grant us a two-year exclusion from the new leaf-blowing law in order to allow the village and the community to see if the new law is viable and if it is working well where it has been implemented. And so we propose the following. Number one, during the months of July and August, behind houses 20 to 32 and 60 to 68, we will utilize only one gas blower and implement the use of four or more electric blowers. Number two, from May 1st to September 30th, we will reprogram all of our gas blowers to run at half throttle all the time while clearing both our common property and the 68 private properties. In doing so, this will dramatically reduce noise and air particulates. We appreciate your consideration in this matter and again formally request an exclusion at least from May 2024 to May 2026, to allow some time for electric blower experimentation, for our own budgeting adjustments, and even more importantly, for technology to catch up to our 25-acre unique needs. We also invite the board to come take a tour of our 25 acres so you can see the extent of the maintenance that we're talking about. And I'd be happy to take you on that tour.
Thank you. So, you know, I can only speak for myself, not for the rest of the board. My, you know, personal feeling is that, you know, based on what we've done in the past, I think this would be more of a one-year granting. I don't see this as a two-year, I mean, you know, using a couple of electric blowers behind a few of the houses for just two months. I don't think represents what we've seen from some of the other applicants. But we certainly understand the difficulties that, you know, the changeover, you know, might, you know, might incur for the larger properties. That's why we put it into the local law. We understand that, you know, that, you know, for the larger properties, a lot of times you're into agreements with the landscaper. Out of curiosity, when does that, I'm assuming you're in contract currently. When does that contract expire?
I'm not sure how that's relevant, but we just renewed a three-year contract recently with Vito.
Okay.
And I have no intentions of getting out of that contract.
Right.
And he's never retired.
I'll open this up to comment from the board.
I'm just curious, what is unique about the houses 20 through 32 and 60 through 68?
I'm Vito Longo. I'm the landscaper at Talcot. I've been here for 20 years. Those areas are areas where Talcot is directly connected with the resident, either on Bonwit or Elm Hill. So we're saying those areas, we don't want to intrude on other residents with using those, using electric blowers on that. The rest of his old wooded area, there is no direct contact with any other residents aside from people at Talcot. The biggest thing with Talcot, it's a big place. It's got a lot of trees and it's got a lot of, lot of grass areas. And it's not like you go to one place, you cut that one house and you move on. We got 68 houses. We have to cut and just continue and continue. As Richard said, all our mowers have mulching blades. Mulching blades are great for April, half of May, June, July, and half of September. Second half of May and June, they're terrible because that's when the grass grows the quickest and the heaviest. And when you're using these mulching blades, you leave chunk of grass throughout the area. And if you don't remove them, it becomes brown. As we said, those areas, we do still need the gas blowers just for the power. As we had a couple of months ago, we had a demonstration of gas power versus electric and there's a big difference, and also a difference in the weight and the equipment, which also will be a problem. But I think for us, we need to get up to a speed where the battery-powered blowers are more compatible or stronger. And I don't think it's going to be this year. Maybe in two years it will be, it'll be there. But to get there, we need some sort of gas store in the summer. July and August, it won't be, it won't be an issue because there ain't that much stuff that we need to blow, so. But May and June is very important that we do have some excess using a gas blower. Because it's very, there's a lot of property. There's a lot of lawn area. When you drive through Talcot, you don't think there's a lot of lawns. You go in the backyards. There's a lot of lawn areas and a lot of grass accumulates. And we don't, we don't beg any of the grass to go throw it out. We just spread it out wherever we could throughout the lawns. So I think that's the biggest key. You know, and down the road, you have probably all be there with battery operated, but I think it's going to be a couple of years before we get there.
I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Vito. Do you have any battery-operated?
Yes, we have a battery, we have battery-operated. As the gentleman said, we bought from Argentals. Theirs is, you know, it's not like a real big commercial use. We have one that lasts about an hour or two and it's not that powerful. Rybrook, we went to a couple of demonstrations that Michael had, and their blowers, which are more commercial, they're way more expensive. It costs you $1,500 for a blower, which comes with a battery. And then you need an additional battery because that battery only lasts from 40 minutes to an hour. So you need, you know, what a gas blower does in one day, I need an electric, I mean, a battery-operated with five or six batteries. And those batteries are very expensive. They're not 300 or 400. They're $700, $800 each. Plus, and each charger's about $350. So that's definitely a big, that's a big expense, which we're gonna have to, you know, we'll do slowly, but I think doing it all at once, you know, it's a big expense and I'm sure they're not willing to absorb that cost.
Yeah. So just, just to be clear, because the letter, I think, is, so a one-year exemption, Chris, would, that would, that would basically mean that they are, they can use the gas right up until May of '26, correct?
No, one-year extension would be for 2024, basically.
Right, right up to '25.
Yeah.
Right.
What we do is we usually sunset it on October of 2024. This way, you have time to either say, okay, everything's great, we can do it, or we need to request another extension.
Right.
I think with the size of the property that's there, with the amount of trees and the amount of grass areas, I don't think one year is enough for us. I think it'd be two years. You know, we'll slowly transition into it.
Right. I mean, just, just, you know, what we've, this is probably our sixth.
Seventh.
Seventh. This is our seventh hearing on these. And we've had, we've had differences in what's been presented to us. You just saw the one before it. And the only twice have we granted a two-year exemption. And on those, part of the exemption was written in that they were only going to use electric on any of the hardscapes. So, you know, we're talking about all sidewalks, driveways, anything like that. So, I mean, it doesn't mean that a year from now, you wouldn't be coming back and getting another one-year exemption. It's just, you know, we think that, you know, we put this law in place for a reason and we're trying to move progressively forward. And so it's, you know, it's more to us about where are we going to stand a year, a year and a half from now.
Excuse me. My name is Debbie Weltman. I live at 46 Talcot. I'm the treasurer of Talcot Woods. I think the one thing that was not emphasized by these gentlemen is the fact that we have these two stream beds and they lead to the pond. And that, that's what differentiates Talcot from all the other HOAs that you've seen. We spent thousands of dollars, we spent $80,000 building one of the stream beds, okay? They have to be kept clean. And they have to be kept clean to keep the water from going into the homeowners, but they also have to be kept clean so that the debris is not going into the pond, which then goes into the Brook. So I think that's something that needs to be emphasized when thinking about Talcot's exemption.
Yeah, those streams you talked, one goes right along Crawford Park. We built that about 15 years ago because it was happening, there was a lot of water coming off and a lot of residents in that area were getting flooded. So they built, they built this, we built this swale, which takes the water around and brings it down to the Brook. Then on the other side, on the Bonwit side, there's also a stream that has to be kept clean all the time. Because the water comes through there and it gets out into the pond and it goes into the Rybrook. And they do accumulate, they do accumulate a lot of debris because it's all in the wooded area.
Understood.
I have a question. Vito, so do you think like during those months, you know, where it's not the leaves that you're worrying about, it's the grass? Like how Jason was just saying on hardscapes, a lot of the other HOAs have said, oh, they would try and use the battery-powered on the hardscapes, not necessarily on the lawns, blowing the grass, like, which it seems like.
Like on driveways and walkways, yes. Whereas the big areas with the clumps of grass, it's going to be a little bit harder. But we have no, on a hardscape, like on a sidewalk, on a walkway, we could do it. Probably the road not, but we clean the road too. But sidewalks and patios, we could get, we could use those.
So I mean, my, my initial instinct here, and I'll let the board, you know, weigh in. My initial instinct here is to grant the exemption as presented for one year?
I think one year's good. Like you say, technology may change, things may change.
So it would be, you know, you know, as, as applied for, you know, to grant the exemption, but for the one year instead of the two, just means you may have to come back next year, that's all.
We appreciate that. Do you mind a question?
Sure.
And you said you gave two, two-year exemptions.
That's correct.
Did we know to whom they were given?
One was to, one was to.
Which ones?
Hidem Falls.
Hidem Falls. Hidden Falls.
And...
Belfair and the Arbors.
Oh, so three, Belfair and Arbors, right.
Parcel. Yeah.
But we also, Jimmy also talked to them about using half throttle. They also had to use...
Well, that was, that was, that was, there were two separate things. The, the one for Hidden Falls was a certain percentage of the property, and that was, and that was half throttle.
Right, they are using some electric, and they are also using half throttle as well.
We were willing, we are willing to use the electric, the battery operated blowers as well as use one gas blower during those months of May and June. In July and August, unless there's a storm, we don't need to use them, we'll use, we'll be, we'll get away with the battery operator. It's just, it's May and June which are the tough months because there's a lot of grass, and the grass accumulates, and it takes us a lot of time for you to hand rake it.
Can I, if I could just pursue this line for a second? The, the areas where you granted the two years, the Arbors, Belfair, and...
Hidden Falls.
Hidden Falls.
Are those larger properties than 25 acres?
It's, you know, and each one has, like you talked about with the, the streams and the swales, and every, and that's why some of the, the board allowed for certain exemptions to come in, because they recognize each one of these larger parcels has different attributes on those properties that raises these issues, so.
Right.
So each one, it's not just the size, it has to do more with, you know, what, what people are facing when they're cleaning the properties, and in the other cases, I think it's just fair to say that the, there was more offering of using, incorporating electric over that two-year period.
Yeah, that was...
Yeah.
We will accept the one year and appreciate it, and we'll see how the technology goes.
Right, but with the other considerations?
All right.
That's what we offered, right.
Yeah, as, as the letter's written.
Yeah.
So just, why don't I try to clarify?
Please, Chris, yep.
So basically, this is granting, granting... Granting an extension through October 1st, 2024, which really gets you to 2025, but gives you time to ask for another extension, based with the following conditions, and those conditions are from July and August on homes 20 through 32, and from 60 to 68, there would be one gas allowed, and the rest would be electric, and from May 1st to September 30th, the gas, the, the gas power would be at half throttle.
Is everyone, am I okay with that?
Yep.
All right, great. And I think, then I think we, I think we have, so can I have a motion in a second, please, as amended, or not as amended, as...
As amended.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
All right, Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
So thorough.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. All right, resolution number three. All right, it's loading. Considering an intermunicipal agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Westchester County for Police Department Communications.
Whereas Westchester County has issued the Village of Rybrook Police Department with radios for the Police Department Communications, and whereas the county seeks to update the Police Department antenna so it's compatible with the county issued radios, and whereas the Village of Rybrook seeks to enter into an IMA with Westchester County to provide the required modifications for Police Department Communications, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves an agreement with Westchester County to provide required modifications to the Police Department antenna to ensure effective Police Department Communication Systems, subject to modification by council, and be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved, second.
All right, this seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
All right. I think, Chris, do you mind taking a roll?
Oh, sure. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, and I believe we're moving to resolution five?
Yeah, but I can give a little update on four, if you like, just to say...
Sure, can you please give a little?
Yeah, it's, it's good news, so. We've been working on this one for a while, and Westchester County has now completed all of the approvals through the, it's been through the Stormwater Advisory Board, it's been through the County Planning Department, it's been the Board of Legislators, their committees, back again, and now the County Board of Legislators has awarded Rybrook a three-point, basically $3.6 million grant towards the $8.2 million project at Avon Circle and the Portchester Middle School. There's still steps that and hurdles that we need to get through, but this is a significant one. It's, you know, almost half of the funding. I think when this project started, it was half the funding. And the next step now is, we're going to be, we're seeking the balance of funds for basically 4.6 million through other grants, and there's applications in process now to try to get the balance of funding. So the steps that are still needed, we're seeking grants for the balance of the project cost, as well as, we'll have to have renewed IMAs with the Portchester Middle School and easement agreements with both the middle school and the, or the school district and Avon Circle. So it's a big hurdle, but it's a good step, a significant step at this time, and this is going to be hopefully before the board at the next meeting, they're just going to incorporate language into the agreement that reflects the additional steps that we still need to occur.
Great, thank you, Chris, thank you for the update, and we hope to see that back on the agenda soon. And hopefully we can find the rest of the money.
And more money.
Which would be phenomenal, especially how we heard how, you know, flood insurance is going up for those in the...
That's a big increase, yeah.
It's a very big increase, it's almost tripling.
Well, hopefully it's a help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The truth is, they're making, if I can talk to it on an insurance basis, they're paying out a lot of losses.
Right.
In a record amount of time, and they're also paying out losses to people that were not paying for insurance.
Right, no, and, and we understand that. It's, we're just trying to do our part to help out the, the community, though.
And I think we're doing it, it's great. How's it going with the houses?
With, on Brook Lane?
Yeah.
I'll give an update on that.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, I'll be happy to give an update.
All right, moving on to resolution number five. Considering the fiscal year 2022, 23, budget transfer and closing of capital projects.
Now therefore be resolved that the following transfer between capital projects is hereby approved in, in the current fiscal year, 23-24, and that's the, from the sewer jet truck to the large truck and salter account in the amount of $3,497. Be it further resolved that the project balance remaining in the bucket truck capital project be transferred to the general fund and re-appropriated to the highway maintenance budget for the purpose of purchasing harnesses and training on the operation of the bucket truck as follows, and it's a transfer from the capital bucket truck account, interfund transfer in the amount of $6,200, and then moved over to increasing appropriations for the interfund transfers in the same amount. And highway maintenance is also increasing the highway maintenance accountant for highway supplies, 2,200, highway maintenance, education and training, 4,000, and increasing revenues in the capital, the amount of 6,200. Be it further resolved that the following capital projects with zero remaining balance in fiscal year 23-24 be closed and removed from the project length schedule, and that's the sewer jet truck, the bucket truck, the AJP roof repair replacement, firehouse, exterior doors stained and painting.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And if you can follow all that.
Yeah, well, in summary, it's very, it's very straightforward, other than the, the language always in the, in the resolutions, but basically what it's doing is we're closing out projects that are completed, and we had a small balance in, 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 in one account for the bucket truck that we just want to use, we have now the bucket truck, we need to do buy harnesses and get some training, so we're just, has to move from a capital project to an operating budget, that's it.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
All those transfers keep us out of trouble with the holidays.
I know, exactly, well, that's why we're squeaky clean every year, I know, it's, what would we do without these? Thank you, Trish, for keeping track of all of this. All right, resolution number six, considering a modification to license and fee schedule.
Whereas the Board of Trustees holds a Winterfest celebration every year on the first Friday of September, and whereas the Superintendent of Public Works would like to add vendors for crafts, and this is another source of entertainment for the event, and whereas a proposed fee to participate is $100 with $50 returned upon arrival, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves modifying the license and fee schedule by adding the following fee, and that's a craft table for Winterfest, $100 with $50 returned upon arrival.
Was that those one...
Oh, it says Superintendent of Public Works as the Superintendent of Recreation.
One fif, is it, is it one fifty?
One fifty with a $50.
No, it's a, we, we were suggesting, and we're having a hard time even getting people because they said that's a lot to make up.
I don't know, I feel like just give it to them, I mean...
Well, no, we need things so that they show up.
We have, we've had that. If the board wants to change it, it's up to you.
No, let's keep it at the hundred, all right, so it's a hundred...
Hundred and fifty comes back.
Fifty on arrival, okay. Well, you know, I'm interested to see whether they're signing up.
It's three hours, you probably get back to 50 bucks, and we're not making much on this, it's just really...
No, it's really to provide a service for those that are attending, you know, something that they can potentially purchase some things, you know, for, for the holiday.
Exactly.
Hopefully the weathermen are wrong. Hopefully the weathermen are wrong.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Thing, it's freezing, what are they saying?
Possible rain.
Possible rain in the afternoon.
Why don't we ever think about...
So I, I think this is something, I think it's worth a shot, I think it's something interesting to try out at, at Winterfest, you know, I think, yeah, we definitely need to change them, Superintendent of Public Works.
That's good.
Maybe Rybrook can have a table.
Yeah. We could use some extra tables. I know the Red Council's been trying to get up interest on people to get tables, so.
Right, so...
Last week, we only had one, so we're trying to get a few more.
All right, well, let's see how it works out, and then we'll know, you know, whether we want to, you know, and maybe next year with more advertising farther in advance, then maybe we're able to...
It's a good idea.
But it's, it's definitely worth a shot, I, I think it's, I, I'm fine, at least changing the fee schedule.
Yes.
That's really all we're doing, we're not approving any or disapproving any tables, we're just changing the, the fee schedule.
Yep.
That would be, they would probably make good money.
They're good money.
All right, any other questions or comments on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you, and hopefully it works out well.
Yes.
I hope.
We'll see. Resolution number seven, considering the award of bids for surplus of municipal vehicles and equipment.
Whereas on November 14th of this year, the board declared certain municipal vehicles as equipment for surplus, vehicles and equipment as surplus, and whereas we solicited bids for the surplus of those seven vehicles and two pieces of equipment, and whereas a public notice was advertising the official newspaper on November 17th, and listings were posted through Auctions International with a bid end date of November 26. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook hereby awards the following equipment to the highest bidder. There was a Ford, 1993 Ford cab and plow, 31, 3150, 1998 Ford L8000 dump truck with plow and salter, 5,700, the Ford dump truck with plow and salter, 1998, 3, 13,100, 1998 Ford sewer jet truck, 5,600, 1995 Emergency E1, E1 Quint aerial truck, 4,650, 1997 Ford dump truck with plow and salter, 4,550, 2019 Henderson V Box Sander, 3,550, Ingersoll Rand compressor, 510, and be it further resolved that the Villa, should there's any bidder withdraw or be non-responsive, the Village of Rybrook Village Board hereby awards the equipment to the next highest bidder.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved, second.
I'm really sad to see the aerial truck going.
Old reliable.
Old reliable. Nothing has been so good for us.
Yeah, that's a sad thing. But it's currently, needs new pistons, it needs a weld on its ladder, it's, our investment into it, particularly, it's not our frontline vehicle anymore.
Right.
Is, it's just time to go.
It is, it's sad to see, reminds me of, oh, anyway.
I think that before our next one, we could have a picture day for the village kids with the stuff.
Leaving goodbye?
I'm saying, you know, you know how popular trucks are, et cetera, so why not have a...
Right, a little, a little going away party? Any questions or comments on this? Anything here? Questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering amended and restated agreement between the Village of Rybrook and the Superintendent of Public Works.
Whereas at the regular...
Only if he buys a table.
For craft table. At the meeting held on October 7th, 2019, the Board of Trustees approved a management employment agreement with Michael Nowak, and said agreement was executed on December 9th, 2019, for a term beginning on October 1st, 2019, and ending on September 30th, 2024, and whereas the village and employee desire to continue as the employee as Superintendent of Public Works for the Village of Rybrook, and enacted an amended and restated management employment agreement, otherwise known as an amended agreement, for an additional five years beyond the prior agreement, and whereas the amended agreement includes but not limited to the following modifications effective December 1st of 2023, the annual salary of the Superintendent of Public Works shall be 170, 170,000. The village provided vehicle can be used for limited personal use in the states of New York, New Jersey, Connecticut. C, post-employment health and dental premiums shall be covered in full by the village unless Mr. Nowak leaves to become employed elsewhere after the agreement and does not retire, in which case he shall reimburse the village for 100% of the health and dental premiums until such times as he retires. D, professional development and other employment is restated and clarified in the amended agreement, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves an amended and restated management employment agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Michael Nowak as Superintendent of Public Works through September 30th, 2029, and be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution, with any reasonable modifications approved by council based on the intent of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris, can I have a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
I'd be the first to say, Michael, how appreciative we are of what you've done for this village, how important we think you are as an employee to this village and, and how much you bring here, and certainly we are very proud to be entering into a longer-term agreement with you to keep you here in Rybrook.
I would be second, but I've already indicated on Thanksgiving that I don't see anything nice until the holiday season.
And I would, I would just add, you know, Michael does a, a great job working for the Village of Rybrook, and we're very lucky to have him here, the community is, and I think it's a really great fit for him as well, I think it's a nice match for both Michael and the village, and I think everyone benefits, but he's earned everything that's in the agreement, and he's done just a great job, he's always there for us, and he's just, you know, a key person who, you know, goes over and above and beyond, he always wears a lot of hats and a lot of different responsibilities and be hard to replace, so, you know, we're, we're glad to make that commitment on behalf of the village, and glad that you're open to doing the same.
Michael, you wouldn't need to wear so many hats if you let your hair grow a little bit.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
No, other than we're, we're very lucky to have you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
With pleasure, yes.
Trustee Marlino?
Yes.
He was thinking about it.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine, considering additional compensation for the police lieutenant.
Whereas the police lieutenant, John Arnold, has performed admirably and took additional responsibilities acting police chief for three months in fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-three while maintaining all of his responsibilities as police lieutenant, and whereas Police Lieutenant John Arnold has received a ten thousand per year stipend, as a stipend for providing all work on discovery to Westchester County District Attorney's Office, now therefore be resolved that John Arnold shall receive a one-time payment of four thousand dollars for his exemplary services acting police chief, and be further resolved that the ten thousand per year stipend for continuing to provide all work on discovery to the County District Attorney's Office shall be incorporated on a prorated basis for two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four into his base salary effective for the payroll period that began on November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Again, you know, this is, I mean, the, the compensation is there anyway for, for Lieutenant Arnold. This is just making it more official, and part of the salary as opposed to stipend, which is really only supposed to be for special work. We know he's continuing this work. We're appreciative to Lieutenant Arnold, everything he does for the village, and, you know, just, it's, it's been a, it's been a true pleasure working with him.
It's so much easier if you save all the nice stuff the holiday season.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolu- and Greg, please, I'm assuming you'll let John know and, and pass the nice sentiments along, even though it's outside. It's beyond Thanksgiving.
No, 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 no. Don't be ruining it for me.
Resolution number ten, considering declaring municipal equipment as surplus.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has municipal equipment that has no longer a functional value or use to the village and may have resale value, and whereas one item that no longer has functional value and may be surplus by the village is a tow behind leaf vac, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees declares the equipment listed below for disposition by the village and its one LL five OBD tow behind leaf vac, and be further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorize Dex can deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee, sorry. Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrators report.
Okay. Couple of items, just, just for the record, just to put on about the, the bidding. There was one item that leaf vac was on the bidding, but it hadn't been declared surplus, so I just want to point out that that's, that's now voided, so, because it wasn't declared surplus. So by now making a surplus, we can now dispose of that vehicle. Other items, I just wanted, again, update on the NRCS program or the buyout program that Trustee Epstein was asking about before. So again, all the appraisals have been completed. We, Greg accompanied the appraisal firm on most of them, on Brook Lane, Wyman Street, and the two on Rock Ridge, and their deadline is there, you know, by the end of this year to have all the appraisals done. So that's their target that we put in the RFP for the, for this work. They're probably going to do it in bunches, like groups of seven or so, and that goes to the state. The state then will make sure that the format and everything is what they need, which we're sure will be fine, because this company's done it for other, other similar NRCS programs in the state, and then the residents, they'll get a copy of the appraisal as well, so there's full transparency. Again, it's not a negotiation. It's either accept or don't accept, and then the residents are going to, residents on those homes are going to have tough decisions. You know, it's going to be, they're going to have thirty days or so to make a decision, which can be extended if it's agreed upon, but about thirty days to say, yes, we, we accept the number, or no, we don't, and then there's other work that has to happen once we know how many of the twenty-two are moving forward at that point.
Wow, that's very interesting.
Yeah, so by the end of January, we should have a good sense kind of where everything is.
Did more people join on since they were allowed to?
Um, we had one other, I think, that joined on Rock Ridge, but that was, you guys are aware of that. I mean, that was one of the twenty-two that we had.
Right, right, right.
Mm-hmm. And other, so that's really moving forward. I think it's kind of hit everybody home now when the appraisers came into people's homes and-
They probably really had a think, yeah.
You know, we're getting those calls saying, you know, we're going to have to now really come in, there's going to be hard decisions for people.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a great opportunity, but it's also a big decision for people to make.
Was it word appraising company for all the twenty-two homes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to, if you remember, we had that as an agenda item a few months ago.
And it's an appraisal company that's done this before, this, this program before, because they have to follow the appraisal specification of the federal government.
Yep.
Right, right.
Uh, other items, Winterfest is this Friday, so it's going to be beautiful weather.
It will be.
Absolutely.
We're going to will it.
And we hope so, and, and we don't know yet, but we hope it will be, and sure, it'll be cold, but that's what Winterfest is about. It's always going to be a little cold. It's December, so December first at Pine Ridge Park from six to nine P.M., and it's going to be another great event. You know, we're really looking forward to it. Leaf collection's also going very well. Most streets have had either ten or eleven collections at this point. You know, it's very quick in the beginning, and then it slows down. Right now, we're on probably the downside of the slope of the hill, so we've probably crested the hill, and we're starting to be on the downside, but, you know, we're about ten days out, which is still a week less than our maximum target, you know, at worst. So, we're doing well. So two weeks is really good at a peak time period, and, you know, we've made a lot of collections on all the homes. A lot of places don't get, you know, make it two or three collections. We, you know, we make sure that people are, you know, it's picked up on a regular basis.
Yeah, I can vouch for that. I, I feel the vibration whenever it passes.
Yes.
It's a sound machine.
Yes, it sure is, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, well, we certainly appreciate all the hard work of everyone out there collecting. I know they're out there on Saturdays as well, and, you know, really just trying to, trying to provide that service to our residents, so thank you to, to everyone for all that they're doing involved with that. Do we have any comments from the public? Please.
Hi, I'm Joe LaRanga. Hi, everyone. I, I live at one-twenty-six North Ridge, and since I moved here three years ago, I noticed a huge problem, speeding down North Ridge. It's crazy. So I called up Greg and asked him, you know, what do we do about this? He put me in touch with Sergeant Dengler, Eric Dengler, and they put a speed sign up outside of my, by my mailbox, outside my driveway, and they found the average speed on North Ridge was forty-four miles an hour. The speed limit is thirty. I personally observed people flying by at fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two miles an hour, and I have a four-year-old, and we have to cross the street because my side of the street, I'm on the same side as Crawford Park. So here's Crawford Park's driveway, here's my driveway, and then here's Betsy Brown. So I, I have to cross the street, and I literally stand there sometimes for two, three minutes. Cars just fly by. Nobody stops for pedestrians. Like, I stopped once at a Crawford Park for a pedestrian to cross, and someone almost slammed into me. About two weeks ago, I'm driving on North Ridge, going into my, going towards my driveway, slowing down, I have my blinker on, and some guy in Audi Q five decided to go around me on a yellow, on a double yellow line. That's illegal. Like, that's just crazy. So I'm here to say, what can we do about this? Sergeant Dengler, I told him, he said, the police can't sit on that area of North Ridge too much because there's no places to hide. So I said, use my driveway, and they did, and they gave out tickets, and then they stopped, and now I see the speeding going back up, and he said by the end of that little initiative to try to get speeding down from forty-four miles an hour, it went down to an average of thirty-seven. So, you know, as, as a person that used to speed when I was twenty years younger, you know, I, I get it. Everyone has their fast cars, BMWs, Mercedes, they go fast, but you don't have to drive down North Ridge and other streets as fast. We need more of a police presence. We need speed cameras, possibly speed bumps, yield to pedestrian signs, anything that will help people slow down and realize, hey, people live here and children live here, and that's the biggest thing. And I live right near Crawford Park. I don't understand how people cross there every day, all day, and cars do not stop. It's, you know, like, are we going to wait till somebody gets hit? Because, you know, that usually is what happens, because when I lived in Whitestone, Queens, I was raised there. I was telling the chief before, we kept asking the NYPD to do something about speeding, and they didn't do anything about it until a fifteen-year-old girl died. A car came speeding down the boulevard and hit her, and literally the back, the, the front of her torso went to the back. She was just kind of cracked in half. Like, we don't want to see that here. Like, I know I don't. Like, it just scares me, and when my daughter's, like, running out, like, I'm like, Charlotte! And, you know, stopping a car from thirty miles to zero is pretty easy. Stopping a car from fifty to zero, I don't know the feet, but it grows exponentially, and if a child gets hit, even at twenty miles an hour, they're gone. That's it. So what can we do to start slowing this area down? Like, when I go to Ry Playland Parkway, it's known, like, you don't speed there. Like, the cops are there. You go over twenty-five miles an hour on a parkway? You get a ticket. Why can't North Ridge be like that? Why can't people get off the hutch and be like, I'm on North Ridge. The cops are going to get me. Like, that's what we need. We need people to slow down, so.
So, if I could just make a con- so I actually live near that area as well. I'm right around the corner from you, so, and we walk into Crawford all the time.
Yeah.
So I've, I've seen it myself. Chris, is this something that we, I know we've looked at the issue before in the past, probably a few times. Is this something we could send to Traffic Commission, have them-
Yeah, probably on this one, though, my suggestion would be, the Traffic Commission should definitely be involved at some point. The, something we did that I'd like to revisit with maybe a different firm, we had a traffic engineer come out and take a look at the area, because one of the questions is, it's a tough, it's a tough area, right? Because people, people do cross into Crawford, but it's not a controlled intersection. You know, it's now traffic light, there's no stop signs, and there happens to be a difficult rise on Rid Street in that location that makes visibility limited-
Right.
-for vehicles. So one of the things we were looking at was, we were given to a traffic consultant to say, give us some options here. What would help slow down traffic to the point where people can cross safer without a traffic light, without, you know, you're not going to get a full, stop signs are the wrong tool for the job. So one of, there is a lot of things out there on traffic calming now, you know, road diets, they call them, to, you know, rumbles, rumbles on different types of pavement, look and feel that lets people know that there's a crossing there. You know, that's one of the things we've looked at, not so much the speeding issue, but how can we more accommodate people that we know are crossing into Crawford on a safer basis, which in essence would slow down when people are crossing. It's a tough one because that rise, but something that maybe we can ask a different traffic engineer to look at, because that, that just didn't move with that, with that particular engineer. You can. That's what we're talking about, but you'd have to do it in combination with, because it's not a controlled intersection. Some places have done things what they call like road diets, that will squeeze a road, will squeeze a road, will give you a little bit of a, people can step into the roadway area that's still raised and part of the sidewalk, so that they get a better view, and it'll slow it down with the road, because the road narrows. That's one, I'm not saying that's the solution. I'm saying is, you're seeing that kind of stuff out there. You're seeing different types of crosswalk pavement applications, you know, that people do, so it's very visible that there's a crosswalk there. Sometimes there's lights that show that, so if there's a visibility problem, you need lights or advanced notification saying, there's a crosswalk up ahead, we need to slow down. So there's different things, but I would recommend, it's probably out of, we probably, you need an engineer, a traffic engineer for this.
Okay.
So if that's something you want to pursue, I can get a proposal for a traffic engineer.
No, I agree.
I think it's worth getting a proposal.
That would, that would be great, but can we have the police just give out a lot more tickets? Like, I know, like, if I see a cop, if I see a cop car pulled over, you know, and, and somebody's in front of him, and they pulled somebody over, I'm going to start thinking, I should slow down. The cops are here, and if you start seeing that every day, and you drive North Ridge every day, you're going to start thinking, all right, I need to slow down, otherwise I'm going to get a ticket and points on my license. It could be just as simple as that, like, police presence and giving out tickets left and right.
Right.
You know, and before you know it, people will get the hint, like, you can't speed here, because the cops are got you.
And sometimes even, I mean, you said it's been out there before, but sometimes even just having the camera where it flashes.
Yeah, I, I said to Sergeant Daniel, I said, do you have, do you have a, a police car that you're not using? Park it on my lawn. You put a cop car on a lawn, NYPD does it all the time in different various places in Queens, and boom, it's on ways, everyone's like, cop, police present, and you look in the police car, and there's no police officer in there. It's just a car. I'm like, I don't care if you kill my grass. Like, if it slows people down, do it. Like, you know, I just-
You should buy a circles car.
So what I would, that may be impersonating an officer if it's not actually a police car. What I would suggest then, Chris, why don't we get a proposal for an engineering study? Let's get a proposal for that, and in the meantime, I would ask that you talk with Chief Austin about potential solutions.
Okay, fair enough, sure.
Thank you.
I mentioned to the mayor that I find that those, I guess, the speed cameras that tell you how fast you're going, and they also have the speed limit posted above it,
Yeah.
work are very effective, because you don't realize how fast you're going.
That's what they had. They, they put that outside my driveway, and like I said, it went from forty-four, and then about two weeks later, it was, the average dropped to thirty-seven.
Yeah.
So it did work. It's just that the batteries die like almost every day.
Aren't they sun?
No, the, the one that you guys have aren't, and I would email Sergeant, the sergeant, and I would say, the batteries are dead. Like, I even offered, like, I'll hold the batteries in my garage and change them myself, because if it helps. Like, I, I go to my mailbox every day, and there's the sign. I'll see when it's dead.
I also noticed that Betsy Brown employed a different technique, which was-
Slow down on Betsy Brown.
Yes.
All the signs that are all over?
Yeah.
I think those were, I think those were privately done, though.
They were. They were.
Or how about the police officer at Portchester off of King Street, because it goes down to like ten miles per hour, and he sits out there all the time, just pulling people over and giving tickets for going over in the school zone.
That's like being down south when you go from fifty-five to ten, and there's no way you can slow down.
Well, that's like Ry, Ry Playland Parkway. Like, as soon as you get off the highway, you're like, you see the sign, speed limit twenty-five, and you see-
But I feel like people also know, like, by King Street School now, there's always a police there, almost always, and because the speed limit drops, because there's a school-
Yeah.
People slow down.
Right. So, yeah, I think, let's, let's look at the engineering, let's discuss this with-
Fair enough.
Staff, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Whatever my, using my property would help the police or help you guys use my property. I really don't care, like-
You're twenty-six, right?
One-twenty-six. Yeah, I, I share a driveway with one-twenty-four, so it's one-twenty-four and one-twenty-six, so the, there's a long, there's a long driveway, and then it splits, and one-twenty-six is more towards the back. But, um, yeah, so whatever you can do.
We'll certainly take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to Winterfest?
Do you want a table?